Welcome to the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty three special meeting of the Thurston Planning Commission, Thurston County Planning Commission with our guests from the City of Olympia Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm this season's chair and reside in District Two. We'll start introductions of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom and then move to online. We'll start down here with Commissioner Hanson, please.
Commissioner Hanson, District Three. Jim Simmons, District Three.
Colin Wheatley, District One.
Derek Day, District One.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
And then online, Commissioner Pestinger?
Evan Pestinger, District One.
And then if the Olympia Planning Commission can introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate it. I can't quite read the screen.
I'll start. This is Carol Richmond.
Commissioner Tracy Carlos.
Dana Najati, Chair.
Greg Queeden, Vice Chair.
That's that's four.
One, one, two, three, four, five. Did anybody? Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we we see four Olympia Planning Commissioners. Are there more online tonight?
Carrie Hornbine, did you introduce yourself?
Well, I'm not a commissioner, but I'm staff. So right now we have four Olympia Planning Commissioners online. I'm shooting an email to the other three that haven't haven't indicated that they'll be absent in hopes that that'll remind them that we have a meeting. So I'll keep you posted if I hear from them.
All right. Well, I think that the combined total here does still leave us with the quorum that we can approve the agenda. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the agenda.
So move second.
Is there any discussion on the agenda? With that, we'll take the vote.
Commissioner Carmen.
I.
Commissioner Day.
I.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Right.
Commissioner Carlos.
Hi.
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 Richmond.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
I. Our agenda is approved unanimously. And with that.
William has joined in case of commissioners. Didn't they just say?
Commissioner William.
Yeah, apologies for being late. I had some technical issues and my camera's not working, so I'm gonna work on that for a moment.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us, and I hope that you're able to approve our agenda for this evening. With that, we're gonna move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from our November third, twenty twenty two meeting. I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move to approve the meeting minutes for November.
On November thirty.
Thirty, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for our November thirtieth, twenty twenty two meeting. That will call for the vote.
Commissioner Carmen.
I.
Commissioner Day.
I.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
All right.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'm seeing that was absent.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Carlos.
Hi.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carlos. Oh, Commissioner Quentin, sorry.
Hi.
Commissioner Whit Richmond.
Hi.
Hi.
Everybody and Commissioner Casino.
I. Those meeting minutes are accepted and the audio as the official meeting record. Thank you very much. We will move on to the public communication portion of our meeting. We don't have anybody here in the boardroom for public communication. If there's anybody online that would like to address the planning commissions, please raise your hand and we'll promote you to speak for three minutes.
Tom Trader.
Tom Trader, you're up.
Okay, hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Can.
Okay, thank you all for meeting and letting me speak. I've been before you before in person. My item on the agenda is the last item, which has regarding the removal of the large grocery store component from the twenty nine fifteen Yelm Highway property.
Tom, I'm sorry, we can't take any testimony on that because we've already held a public hearing on it. So we appreciate the testimony that you provided before and have taken it under consideration, but once we've held a public hearing on something, we can't take any more testimony on that particular issue.
One thing is I've been communicating with the county with Leah about the wording of the second option on that, and I don't see her on my screen.
Tom, she's here, but really, we can't. We can't.
All right. I was just want to make sure that that got communicated to you guys. All right. Thank you.
Move it all forward. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commissions?
We're a little over here.
Was that anybody?
It was somebody.
That was somebody, but it was somebody trying to address us. All right, with that, we don't have any more new business, but we are gonna move on to our continued business, which is the whole point of tonight's meeting, and that's a work session on CPA one, the Olympia Joint Plan, and we'll be hearing from Planner Leah Davis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for being here tonight. I hope this is our final work session on the Olympia Joint Plan. It's a total repeal and replace for an update. It'll take me a second here to share my screen. I have a brief PowerPoint. And then we can go into discussion. Can everyone online hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just to work. All right. So the intent of tonight's work session is again to it's an element of the the joint plan is an element of the city and county comprehensive plans. The objective is to update and amend the joint plan for current conditions in the UGA and also to make it in alignment with the county and the city comprehensive plans. The last work session we held was November thirtieth. We had a public hearing and then a subsequent discussion. From that discussion, some planning commissioner requests that we add some goals and policies for future updates for two primary reasons, to protect farmland in the UGA and to evaluate the UGA boundaries and consider sub area plans. Also, we wanted to see some context about why some areas are in the joint plan, even though they are not specifically in the UGA. That would be the downtown and the corridors. So to get to the farmland first, this is in the natural environment chapter. We already had this goal to goal number two, land is preserved and sustainably managed. We've added several policies to that goal that address farmland in the UGA. One new goal is the county and city should work together to identify strategies to mitigate for loss of working farms in the UGA. Then a new policy, number four, explore innovative strategies that help to facilitate continued agricultural activities within the UGA, such as an agricultural protection overlay or public farmland initiative like transfer of development rights. The reason that this one is highlighted is that the the draft that is sent out a week ago had some wording in it. The planning manager has changed that wording a little bit, improved some of my word crafting. And these are new words. It was slightly amended, and we can go into those details if you like. But the highlighted words on this slide and the next two slides were amended after that draft went out a week ago. So on the same goal, new policies, policy five, expand the use of purchase of development rights and transfer of development rights programs to support compact growth in the UGA while conserving long term ag of commercial significance in the rural county. Policy number six, the county and city should work together to identify tools, and I can't see all of my thing, my apologies. Tools and review regulations to better support small agriculture within the UGA. A new policy, number seven, identify tracking methods to track acres of agriculture lost to to conversion, so mitigation strategies can be implemented to offset the acres lost. Those are all new policies, and this one again was different from what I sent out a week ago. Then this is evaluating the UGAs. There were some concerns about areas that were hard to sewer and some other items that came up. So we've added a new goal, goal number eighteen in the land use chapter. The urban growth area is appropriately sized and includes land that can be developed to higher intensities. So we've also added three policies to that goal, and they are here. The county and city regularly review of official population forecasts to ensure there is enough buildable land to meet future demand, and if needed, adjust the boundaries accordingly. Policy two, at appropriate intervals, the county and city assess the ability of the existing UGA to be developed to the planned densities and add or remove areas to meet those goals. Policy three, in future joint plan updates, consider developing planning area profiles for the northeast, southeast, and west areas within the Olympia UGA to provide place specific planning information and if applicable policies. So that is highlighted because in that last meeting, we talked, we kept referring to that as sub area plans, and that is not the correct terminology for what would be inside the joint plan. That would be a standalone document and not appropriate for this application. So we've just changed that wording from sub area plans. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. So then we added some context for why downtown is included in the joint plan. This is in the land use chapter, and we just added the words that are underlined to an existing paragraph. So some areas like the downtown area are composed of commercial, cultural, and residential activities and land uses that are accessed by residents of the city, the urban growth areas and beyond. So that's a new sentence to put context in there. Another section was a narrative about downtown, and it talks about the heart of Olympia and so we added the words, not just for our city and urban growth area, but for the larger region. So it already included the larger region. We just added the the verbiage urban growth area to that paragraph to explain why that's in here. Then downtown was addressed finally in the economy chapter. It talks about how downtown Olympia is a special place, what draws people down here, the Performing Arts Center, the region's banking sector, and the recreational hub for the urban growth area and the region. Also, it is home to the farmer's market, the state's largest farmer's market. It's the Olympia Farmer's Market, and I added the words to the sentence about family owned farms and businesses, many based in the urban growth area and rural Thurston County. So that's new verbiage to address the urban growth county or the urban growth area. And then there were some questions about why corridors, transportation corridors are in the joint plan. This is a paragraph that we added. And I took it from, it's primarily from the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, and it just explains what the corridors and what they do and why they're there and how we treat them. So that's a whole new paragraph. And then I added some context for the Lily Road corridor about how people out in the rural county and the urban growth area might be using that as an alternative route for South Bay. Heading into the north of this, to the city center or Interstate five, that's new context. A little more context for the Kaiser Road and Blackleg Boulevard corridor. So it will help connect the northwest UGA to one oh one and the west end of Harrison Avenue. So that's a corridor that runs into that west side UGA. And then this is a paragraph in the transportation chapter that talks specifically or more generally about urban corridors. And I lifted most of this from the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as well, and it just talks about what's designated a corridor, why they're there, and it lists a few that I thought were relevant to the UGAs, that specific avenue, Capitol Way, Martin Way. And then further in the next paragraph, I added context, those quarters helped to serve residents in the urban growth areas. Does anyone want me to read that entire paragraph? Okay. And there are strategy corridors. This was in the joint plan. I added more context. So such roads include South Bay Road and Rainier Road, and then it talks about Yelm Highway briefly and talks about instead of widening these corridors, some some techniques that can be used to make them more to increase their level of service, but without creating a wider street. So this is also from the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. And then I'd like to revisit the Glenmore Village application or that project one more time. You might recall that the applicant initially applied for a land use and zoning rezone from a planned development to professional office and multifamily for a land use and for the zoning from community oriented shopping center to professional office residential multifamily. And you may remember that this proposal was not supported by the city or the county because it did not meet the intent of what that design was for that planned development. So we met with the applicant back in September, maybe, and we talked about doing a text, a code text amendment in lieu of this. And that would be a very minor code text amendment. The grocery store seemed to be the obstacle to doing development there, and so we changed the we were proposing, one of the proposals is to take the grocery store out as a requirement, leave it in as a permitted use so that it could meet the the desires of the developers. And you may remember that we got testimony from the applicant and the applicant's consultant that that would meet their needs if we did the code text amendment. So we have time for discussion, but I have included a draft motion. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, we do have some. We're gonna start with Commissioner Pestinger, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could we go back to slide six? P N two point seven. You mentioned that the part in highlighted identified tracking methods to track was a change. I tried to look up the earlier document. I can't find it. What was it? What did it previously say?
In the version that I sent out a week ago, it is a new, a new policy. It said, in future updates to the working lands strategic plan, the county and city should work together to track acreage of agricultural law agriculture lost due to conversion. So mitigation strategies can be implemented to offset the acres lost. So it doesn't refer to that working land strategic plan. It just talks about identifying methods to track agricultural land that was lost.
Okay, would it be possible or would it make sense for us to potentially change that to not just identify, but start tracking or implement tracking, identify and implement tracking method, something like that?
Identify and implement tracking methods to track acres of acreage lost due to conversion?
Implement. Methods?
Because I guess we'll just kind of hold a room. Does anybody have a issue with that? Because that seems very reasonable to me. Commissioner Pestinger, that's a good suggestion. Do you have any more?
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, under page eleven, no, I'm sorry. Page ten or slide ten. I don't know whether it matters, but the last sentence, the market serves as a tourist attraction, maybe we should change to the market serves as the leading tourist attraction for the county. I understand it's not just the leading, but more than twice the second biggest tourist attraction, which is the Capitol Campus.
It doesn't. So you want to, you're suggesting what?
The last sentence, the market serves as a tourist attraction, maybe saying the market serves as the county's leading tourist attraction.
Yeah.
I like it the way it is. Commissioner Pestinger, I think that might be a bridge too far if that's not. Okay.
All right. Sounds good. No big deal.
Any more? Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna move on to Commissioner, I'm sorry, I can't read the name from here.
Eric.
Eric Richards, please.
Thank you. Back on agricultural policy two point six, P N two point six, when we were, yeah, that one, where it says the county and city should work together to identify tools. I think I have the same comment that was mentioned regarding two point seven. Which is in regard, in regard to implementation. And so my suggestion is to change the word should to commit, so it would read the county and city commit to working together to identify tools. Should is a little a little vague. It doesn't really ensure that anything will happen.
This was gonna be my comment as well, and I would suggest just changing it to will.
Yeah, that's fine. Fine with me.
Go ahead. These are policies, right?
Yes.
Policies are most are typically more general than specific. I mean, that's why I'm sure, that's why I thought using the word should in a policy is okay.
Well, yeah, if everyone reads it that way, I suppose. The way I read it, it's doesn't sound as strong as a commitment or as will work.
Well, go ahead, Colin.
She just took out the word should, so it says the county and city work together.
Yeah. Yeah, I suppose.
Everybody okay with Commissioner Wheatley's suggestion?
Yeah.
Right.
That'll be.
We'll go with that route then. Fisher Wheatley, did you have something else, too? Yeah, I thought I saw you raise your hand earlier. Does anybody else have anything on CPA one?
CPA one.
I have another question.
Commissioner Pestinger?
Going to the Glenmore Village question. Under community oriented shopping center, does it describe a minimum size that the grocery store has to be a minimum size, or is it just a grocery store, or does it require a full shopping center?
No, a grocery store is just one of the required elements. There are other allowed, well, there are other standards like certain types of retail space, but nothing that's required specifically. And there is a requirement for a specific size, which was part of the problem, I think it was. Well, I think it was no more than fifty thousand square feet. It was, the expectation was that it would be a supermarket, and I think that was what's blocking a lot of some some concerns from developers.
Is it a minimum requirement or a maximum size requirement?
I believe it was a maximum of fifty thousand square feet. And and I want to add that a food store is still allowed, but it doesn't have to be a grocery store. There might be differences there, very subtle.
I would just like to make the statement that I was at Trader Joe's the other day, and I talked to the store manager who said that they were responsible for new development of new locations for this area everywhere south of Lakewood, actually, and they said they had never been approached about this, and they would be very interested in considering this location.
It would still be in allowed use, wouldn't it?
It would still be in allowed use. That's correct.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Well, I have a question. Could you put that slide up with the permitted and required? Is it the next slide?
Yeah.
Yeah. So so right now the grocery store is the only element that is required.
Not necessarily. This is just a small screenshot of the bottom part of that to show that one change there. I honestly can't tell you. I could look up the code and find it, but.
Well, my question was just, is this just specifically for this, for Glenmore Village, or would it change it across the board for these kinds of developments?
Harry, am I right in saying that this COSC is the only one in the UGA?
Correct.
So it would only change this one, but it also change all of them at the same time.
So my my impression here is that our, with our decision point here, the the first one is the one that staff and the applicant desire the most.
The code change rather than the rezone. That's correct.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this particular issue? With that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll put forward a motion.
Please do.
I move to recommend adoption of the Olympia Joint Plan, an element of Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as amended tonight. And further move to recommend approval of amendments to presidential districts to remove the grocery store requirement from the community oriented shopping center zoning district.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Reiterate, the motion is to recommend adoption of the Olympia Joint Plan, an element of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as amended this evening. Further move to recommend approval of amendments to the Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty three point zero five residential districts to remove the grocery store requirement from the community oriented shopping center zoning district. With that, is there any further discussion?
I just have a question. Because I've recused myself from the Glenmore piece. So do I vote at all, or do just?
Commissioner Simmons is abstaining from the second part of that motion. Yeah. But he would like to vote on the first part of that motion. Do we have to break it up? Okay, then Barry, could you have made that motion, moved to him in that motion?
I'll move to amend the motion to move to recommend adoption of the Olympia Joint Plan, an element of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as amended this evening.
Or second?
Second.
So the amended motion is to recommend adoption of the Olympia Joint Plan, an element of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as amended this evening. With that, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Carmen.
I.
Commissioner Day.
I.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Carlos.
Hi.
Commissioner Najati.
Hi.
Commissioner.
I.
Commissioner Richmond.
Hi.
Mr. Hannah.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi.
Commissioner Sarah Hop has joined the meeting.
Commissioner Sarah Hop.
Hi, thank you.
Hey, that motion passes unanimously. There's a second half of that?
Like to make a second motion, move to recommend approval of amendments to Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty three point zero five residential districts to remove the grocery store requirement from the community oriented shopping center zoning district.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved to recommend approval of amendments to the Thurston County Code, Chapter twenty three point oh five residential districts to remove. Chapter twenty-three point oh five residential districts to remove the grocery store requirement from the community-oriented shopping center zoning district. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, let's call for the vote.
Commissioner Carmen.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Helverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Nay.
Commissioner Carlos.
Aye.
Commissioner Najetti.
Aye.
Commissioner Quentin.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Sauerhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Hannah.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes um, all but one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Davis. We appreciate you coming in again.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners.
With that, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is staff updates. Manager Chris Chapeau.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the Olympia um, joint plant or the planning commission can stay on. Um, but I don't have any updates for either one.
All right.
Chair Najati has her hand up.
Yeah, I just, um, I just wanna take some time because we didn't get a chance to after the motion was made. I just wanna acknowledge the work that Carrie and Leah have done on this joint plan, um, including incorporating all that feedback from both the Thurston County and the Olympia Planning Commission. I know it's really hard to wordsmith things um, and make everyone happy. So I just wanna acknowledge all the hard work that went in and say that I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our uh, uh, agenda for this evening is to go over our calendar for February. And um, February first, which is just next week, we will be working on the Grand Mound, uh, finishing that up and some clerical code updates. Is everybody on the Thurston County Planning Commission expecting to attend? Won't, maybe no Doug, and Doug won't be here. Anybody else think they might miss it? All right, and then on our February fifteenth agenda, we're tentatively gonna be working on more clerical code updates. Does anybody think they will not be able to attend? Looks like we should have a full house there. With that, is there anything for the good of the order?
Well, just, just a, I was trying to find the date for the TRP, the next TRPC meeting because people might be interested to know they're gonna be rolling out the um, the uh, comprehensive plan um, review process at the next TRPC meeting. And they're also gonna be talking about next steps for the Dischutes um, estuary.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I didn't write down, I think it's on the, on uh, the third, but I'm not.
Well, everybody should take a look at their website and, and figure that out. Commissioner Pestinger, you had something to?
Yeah, I guess I would call it a point of confusion. Um, at the last meeting we had, and this is specific to the Thurston Planning Commission. At the last meeting we had, I had specifically asked the staff about their recommendation on a particular element and was told that the staff does not ever provide recommendations to the planning commission. And then tonight, I'm being told this was a recommendation by the staff. And maybe you were the one that stated it, Chair Casino, so maybe you just didn't mean that wording, but is that right? Do we, do we receive recommendations or not from staff?
Well, it's probably, if, if the problem here is I misspoke, that is probably very likely. That's a common thing for me, uh, if I didn't use the right terminology. But uh, I don't know if staff wants to address that any on, on.
Right, so we will provide provide information uh, to the planning commission. Um, typically, we're not um, recommending one way or the other. We will um, provide as um, we did today, a recommendation for you all to review and move forward um, in order to help the planning commission along, so they don't have to create it as we move forward on the spot. But it was not necessarily a recommendation from staff. It was to facilitate the meeting.
Sounds fair, me go ahead.
Got it. I, I, I appreciate if it's um, draft motion language, that makes sense. Um, so you're saying there was not a recommendation by staff tonight that we adopt the joint plan and not a recommendation to approve the amendments?
Correct, it was a draft, um, yeah.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, I should have asked this during the staff report thing, but I had a question um, that came up um, in uh, from a, I don't know what you call it, a constituent or whatever, somebody was talking to me. Um, about the um, comprehensive plan review uh, process. Um, they were wondering, and I am wondering, if there has been a, since the scoping, the scoping is, we're in the scoping period right now, are we? Or?
So staff is working on reviewing information to bring together uh, the comprehensive plan update. But it is not on our work plan at this point in time where we've got some background information um, and research that we need to do first.
Okay, and so the question that I, I had been asked was, has there been like a, an assessment, like um,
That's what we're doing.
Your, your, and will that become publicly available, will it be posted on the website or something when it's, when it's finished?
Assessment itself?
Yeah, that's what they were wondering.
Yeah, so we will be providing to the Board of County Commissioners an update on the um, twenty forty-five, um, Thurston twenty forty-five project and um, asking for their um, how they would like to proceed forward with that particular work based on our um, review of the necessary updates that we're currently completing at this time. So there's more to come on it. There will be more information up on our websites. And it will go before the Board of County Commissioners um, to approve or adopt a scope of work. But it will probably take us a good portion of this year to get all of that put together.
And are you um, utilizing the um, the PSRC or the, the commerce slash?
Yes, we, we.
Checklist?
We start with a checklist and then move from there.
Is that, I guess the question was whether that could be made?
Commerce's checklist is on their website, they can.
No, when, the one, like when it's completed, will the public be able to see the completed checklist?
I don't know at this point in time. The information that will be made available will be on our website.
Yeah. To the survey that went out, we will, we are working on compiling these results and doing a survey and report. And that will be made publicly available once that's complete. So probably in the mid-March timeframe, folks can work out for that. But I can certainly let the planning commission know when the survey results are compiled into a report and send that out to the planning mission.
Okay, so, but you don't know about the checklist, the assessment checklist part?
So we, we do use the checklist while working on uh, the scoping. And I would expect that at the time we start bringing list to the board, for the board to start discussing scope of work, then the checklists will probably be part of the board materials and folks can access it that way.
Thank you.
Uh, I see a hand raised online, but I can't tell who that is. Oh.
It's just a grabber thing.
Oh, all right. Well, with that, does anybody have anything else? Well, with having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Eric.